Ladies and gentlemen, we are here. Final session of the conference. But before I kick start that session, I have been looking at my super enthusiastic photographer here, who has been asking everyone to, you know, put their thumbs up for a video, am I right? Well, let me tell you tomorrow, you're going to be having the time of your life because one of the most awaited sessions and one which is my personal favorite will be happening tomorrow because cashew is one industry which is absolutely blessed to have a congregation of lovely women from across the globe who are partners, decision makers and stakeholders of this industry across various levels of supply chain. And the cashier women's segment specifically recognizes these women as they come up on the stage and deliberate on certain issues. So for all the men in the house, make sure that you arrive tomorrow on time and you stay with us through the day because tomorrow is going to be very interesting as you will have all the woman power on the stage for the cashier women's section, all guns blazing. Are we ready? All right. But right now, let me move on to the final session of the day. Ladies and gentlemen, just to give you a quick overview of Watson pipeline, after this session, we will directly proceed, hopefully keeping the timing in mind. The cocktails will begin from seven o'clock and seven thirty immediately after the first performance of the evening, we have a lovely Cambodian dance performance in the evening, a dance of the masks coming up. Post that, we shall be felicitating each one of our esteemed sponsors and associate bodies. So whenever we break this session, please freshen up but do come back fast as we would not have a lot of time and we need to turn over the hall. We would be opening that segment in between so that you can view this convention hall in its full glory. Ladies and gentlemen, we are ready for our final session. This one is a deep dive, a deliberation into the Cambodia cashew sector. There are certain points which will be discussed in detail. What leads to achievement of a high yield on the farm? The cashew policy of Cambodia? What are the specific highlights? And the investment opportunity for overseas partners? So whether you are based in Cambodia, whether you're somebody who has interest in Cambodia's cashew market right now, well, this session is for you. Our moderator for this session is Mr. Deepen Joshi, the general manager, Olim Food Ingredients. Let's give him a round of applause as he joins us up here. Mr. Joshi has worked with Olim. Current role, he is a general manager for cashew business in Cambodia and leads filling center and byproduct sales in Vietnam. And as he joins us up here. Ladies and gentlemen, let me tell you about our speakers up here. Please put your hands up as I invite onstage His Excellency Suon Sofah, Deputy Secretary General of the Cambodian Investment Board. Let's hear it for His Excellency Suon Sofah. Inviting next, His Excellency Mr. Var Roth San. Mr. Var Roth San, a national of Cambodia, is a current secretary of state, Ministry of Commerce, and also a farmer and technical advisor. He is a speaker on intellectual property rights, pepper and cashew crop focusing very specifically on the technical method of pepper and cashew planting, establishing pepper and cashew associations and federations. Besides, among others, Mr. Van Roth San is responsible for the value chain of agricultural crop production, especially for rice, cashew, and cassava. Ladies and gentlemen, the most important thing that I need to tell you about him is, well, Mr. Var Roth San is a true farmer at heart, an iconic figure in Cambodia. Let me tell you that he has gained good experience on grafted cashew tree saplings and how to reduce consequences of climate change on cashew crop. Author of two books titled Successful Experiencing of Planting Grafted Cashew Tree, M23, and Keys to Reduce the Consequences of Climate Change on Cashew Plant. Ladies and gentlemen, if you had the time to step out during lunch or if you have been seeing our expo area, you must have noticed that beautiful photo opportunity of the cashew conference with the M23 variety. How many of you have seen that? Can I see your hands up? How many of you have picked them up in your hands, which I did? And let's give a round of applause to the father of M23 on this stage. Also additionally, he has fathered M10 and S12. A very, very warm welcome to Mr. Var Roth San on this stage. Our next speaker this evening on this panel is His Excellency Chan Sofah, Director of General of the Institute of Standards of Cambodia, Ministry of Industry, Science and Technology and Innovation, Misti. He obtained his master's degree on technology of rubber, plastic, and leather from University of BRNO Czech Republic and has over 29 years of experience on standardization and conformity assessment works in the country, in ASEAN, and other countries. Also, let me tell you that he's been an ASEAN leader for negotiation on standards, technical regulation and conformity assessment procedures, TBT with Hong Kong, China, and United States. Our final speaker for this final session is Mr. Yin Chan Sothi from the Ministry of Agriculture, Fishery, and Forestry. Let's hear it for Mr. Yin Chan Sothi. So I'm sure whenever. All right. So with our final speaker walking up, it is time for me to leave this session in the very able hands of Mr. Deepen Joshi, who's going to be steering it through the key points that I've mentioned at the beginning of this introduction. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the final session for the day. And let me tell you once again, we meet here at seven o'clock again for a lovely night of cocktails, felicitation, and entertainment.
Good evening, everyone. So Cambodia has lately come up as a global leader when it comes to raw cashew nut. And it has come up in such a big way that it is inching very close to IVC to displays as world's leading producer of raw cashew nut. And the people who are responsible for this achievement are on the podium today evening. So I'm very grateful that I have this people with me. And we will be talking on this, on how this achievement has been reached by the delegates. That Cambodia, which is the highest quality nut available in the world, the Cambodian cashew nut, which is the biggest possible variety available in the world, and how did we do that? Yeah? So then we will start our first discussion with His Excellency Sun Sofal.
I thank you very much for the opportunity to join you all. I think it is in between our discussion and the dinner. It's not easy for us to give a very short introduction of how Cambodia do to attract the investment specialists in the cashew nut, cashew sectors. We've been working together with the private sectors, also development partner, to create an enabling investment environment where we introduce an open door policy, which is allow the private sectors, the foreign company, to invest in every economic sector. We not close any sector. And we try to put Cambodia as a location for investor to pick, as a location for their future investment. And our approach toward the private sectors is to facilitate them, to incentivize them, and also provide them the aftercare service when they are decided to invest in Cambodia. So with that approach, we put forward various policy together with the environment that we try to make Cambodia as a peaceful place for you to invest. Know that your investment will be guaranteed. We offer a environment that is, you can go everywhere in Cambodia so that you can put your money and bring back the profit. So this is how Cambodia tried to do. An ethnic council for development in Cambodia, where I am working for, this council is created as a government for the private sectors. Why I said it's a government for the private sectors? Because the prime minister, he devote himself as a chairman and a lead policy decision maker. So we have prime minister as a chairman and all the ministers that dealing with the economic sector is a member. So whatever decision made by relevant ministry, it consider us a decision by the government that we form this organization to help private sectors to get a one-stop service. So when you put your investment, you decide to come to Cambodia and you lodge application to the Council for Development of Cambodia. You don't need to go anywhere. The representative of all the ministry that stay together at the Council for Development of Cambodia will do everything for you. This is something I want to highlight to you, that the council is working to help you when you decide to do investment in Cambodia. I think I share with you this. If I have more time or next opportunity to stand again, I will tell you where and what we prepare to help the cashew nut, the cashew sectors to invest in this economy. So I stop here. I will come back again for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Please to hear that, that prime minister is personally chairing this. That's a big achievement when a such a senior government official is directly involved. So for the next, I would like to invite His Excellency Var Roth for the session. Sir.
Good afternoon. In fact, I have only five minutes to tell you about the policy of cashew Cambodia. And I think that you may look into internet or look into the document and you may know quite well about the policy of Cambodia on cashew. Therefore, I don't like to spend much more time, much time to explain you about the policy. But I may inform you about the special variety of cashew M23. Please go to the slide number 12. Yes, thank you. If you look into this slide, you may see that the year capacity of M23 are high. If you look into the number four, M23 may give you 3,000 kilogram to 3,500 kilogram the dry nut a year. Therefore, even Cambodia have a small land than other country in Africa. But some year, we get very high productivity. I heard that in some Africa country, the year only 800 to 1,000 kilogram per hectare. I don't know whether it's true or not, but in Cambodia, for M23, we may get 3,000 or 3,000 to 3.510 per hectare. But the year receive based on the quality of the soy. You may see on this slide, yes. Next slide, please. And here, you may see the summary table on the duration for the development of butt of should flower and fruit naturally. Why we should look into this? Because if you know quite well about the duration, you may apply fertilizer or something else correctly. This very important for farmer to know. Some people ask me that why you write a book and very complicated like this? Complicated, it true. But if the farmer could not understand about the duration for the development of butt of fruit, flower, and fruit, they will not have a good year. This very important. Next slide, please. In Cambodia, we have seven good variety of cashew tree. And here, you may see that the time of flowering are different. For example, M1, we can call that that variety is a kind of late variety. For M23, the number two, we call early and late variety. And a year, M23 flower three times a year, not like other variety. And start flowering from 15 November. So even we face the climate change, M23 still give you the year, even not the high year, but at least the farmer can get year better than other variety. For example, you may see the number nine, 809 variety. Starting flower from November 20, we call the early variety. But if you look into the duration of blossom flower per panicle, 809 only seven to 12 days, while the M23 15 to 20 days. It mean like that. It mean that. If there are flowering and blossoming and have raining, M23 still have still set fruit after flowering. But for 809, because very short duration of blossom, the flower can be damaged or. Need a special characteristic of variety of Cambodia, yes. Please, next slide. If you look into this table, you may see that Vietnam import cashew nut from Cambodia a lot. Look into this table, you may see that Cambodia is the second importer of cashew nut to Vietnam. Next slide, please. This, I think this morning you all may go to see plantation in Symbriab already. But this picture show you that M23 set fruit a lot for a bunch of flower. Sometime 40, 40 fruit a bunch. But for Cambodia, we think that it is not good enough. It is not good because much fruit in a bunch, the nut will be smaller. And if there are some worm, the farmer face problem to kill the worm because the worm will be in the middle of the bunch. I think because of time, I cannot give you more about the specific characteristic of M23 and the policy of cashew nut of Cambodia. So thank you so much for your attention.
Next, I would like to invite His Excellency Chan Sofah.
So good evening, everyone. I hope that the time is to near to run time now. So from this afternoon, the first during the opening remarks by our deputy prime minister already said that Cambodia developed a national policy for cashew nut that intention that identify to want to export Cambodian cashew nut to the world market by a good quality and safe. To achieve this policy, our governments already set up the work plan, action plan, and also the mechanism how to improve the quality and safety of the cashew nut for exporting to external market. For all these tasks and the work plans are already distributed to all ministry and agency concerned. At the institute of standard Cambodia, we have the task to develop a national standard to improve the quality and safety of cashew nut. For this moment, we already set up the national standard for cashew nut by the, we call it Cambodia standard CS159. This standard already mentioned about the, I just described briefly. This standard is already specify the requirement, packaging requirement, hygiene, labeling, and sampling, including the criteria for the conformity assessment activity. This standard, you also mention that is to apply for the whole canal and also for the broken canal. I cannot go through the detail of this standard, I just briefly. This standard, you also did classify the size of the cashew nut that we classify into a size. This size also we call start from W180 to W50, 500. This standard also we set, this like a voluntary, but we need to all of our farmer, all of our producer to follow this standard. The reason we use this standard to make any FDA with dialogue with a like a country, dialogue partner, with a trade partner in the future, as mentioned by the minister of commerce of Cambodia during the opening mark. So the cashew nut is the one item, the one issue that we want to export, we want to make like the issue to discuss with a free agreement with other country like China, like Korea, or like Saudi Arabia, as mentioned by our minister this afternoon. Regarding also this standard, also set the minimum requirement that require for the product produced that should not shoot free from damage affecting the apparent or the apparent should be clean, free from any visible like foreign smell, free from living pest and image caused by pest. That as mentioned, I, next slide this, yeah. Yes, this is one, yeah. So free from abnormal external moisture and foreign smell. Also, we mentioned that all produce or product of cashew nut, the moisture content not excess more than 5% if we count mass per mass. Regarding packaging, packaging, so the producer may pack this product in a sack way so that we can protect the producer properly. Also, we can pack in a chemical scale container or any packaging material that we use for packaging so should be clean and quality. This is also requirement for our farmer, our producer. Regarding labeling identification for a product should be follow this standard of Cambodia standard like CA 001 2000. As mentioned by our deputy prime minister and our minister, and also I hear from our speaker from the first session and second session also mention about the safety. Yes. So for fulfill our government policy to export a product with the quality and safety, so we try to promote our farmer to use the standard regarding a safety issue, regarding the quality issue. So for the issue, for this, so we try to promote to our industry, cashew industry by using the GMP standard like we call a good manufacturing standard. We try to promote them to use hazard standard like hazard analysis control point and also use the standard regarding hygiene. This the concept standard that we try to promote our industry to use for improve their quality, their management stem and production process. That is regarding my short presentation. Due to the time constraint, the organization give me only five minutes, so I try to finish my short presentation at this moment. Thank you very much for your kind attention.
Would like to invite Dr. Singh for the next.
Thank you. I'm the last speaker of today's. Just want to tell you that first, I'm here to present on behalf of our college, Mr. Yin Chan Sothi, yeah, Mr. Dr. Chim Chai, for the Ministry of Agriculture, Forestry, and Fishery. Second things, I want to tell you that I'm not the. Second things, I want to tell you that I'm not the cashew man by educations, but I'm a fan of cashews and I love cashew. Thank you very much, that's why I'm here. So look at the, yeah, please, please go to the next slide. I want to touch here by starting with why the Royal Government of Cambodia has the cashew policy like Excellency Varo San mentions. Some of the key point here, that the cashew industry in Cambodia have good reputations because of the quality, the taste, the size and the seed and the variety, and especially the farmer practices, which is environmentally and traditionally farming practices. We have over one hundred traditional variety, but we selected the one that we call the improved traditional variety M twenty-three's, which is more resilient to climate change or you can say more adaptive to a changing climate. It is grown over seventy percent of the total cashew planting area in the countries. We export remain over ninety percent of our raw cashew nut to the world, especially Vietnam consume the most, to Japan, to India, Philippines as well, yeah. So we also have the, you know, the soils, the climates condition that favorable for the cashew to grow and produce good yields. We also have the people, especially farmers, who has the spirit. The farmers, our farmers, has the culture of farming for at least one thousand years, you know. The political and the economic geography also allow Cambodia to promote, to develop cashew to be an industrial cashew sector in the country. These policies has the milestone to achieve one million tons of exports in five years by 2027. So can we do it, can we make it? Let's have look at some of the informations that I will share with you. So I will touch more on the technical aspect, okay, in answering to the questions, what leads to the achievement of high yield on farm, okay? So do we have next slide please? So look at the, you know, the status of cashew production in the countries. Cashew is grown almost over the country, but we have major province that produce cashews in here, okay? With the total area of around four hundred seventy-three thousand hectares reported by Ministry of Agriculture, Forestry and Fishery. Next slide please. Here, we have this satellite work to assess the cashew planting area in the countries. And we have the, you know, I mean, a future estimate of over five hundred thousand hectares of the cashew area in Cambodia. Next slide please, yeah. Next slide, please, yeah. And well, this is a production, I don't need to repeat. You have heard already, you have. So we just have around like four hundred seventy-three thousand hectares of the land with a production of over seven hundred thousand tons. We have one hundred, we have forty-one cashew processing enterprise and handicraft, twenty-four of which belong to the agricultural cooperatives. We have one hundred sixty-two agriculture cooperatives that focus the cashew productions and of course, two cashew associations. Next slide please. Now, if you look at the biological resource of the country, we have assessed the suitability of our land resource for cashews. We have about one hundred, about one point twenty-four million hectares of the land suitable for cashews, most suitable, highly suitable, and about five million hectares are suitable for cashew. Look, right now, we have, you know, only say about half million or hectares of the cashew production area. So if you look at the suitability and highly suitable land for cashew production, we have a total of over six million hectares. Not in five years' time, if we can increase by five percent of the land, expansion of the land, but not the forest, okay? I repeat, it's not going to be cutting the forest, but we have arable lands that suitable for cashew production based on these statistics. So if we have an increase of five percent of these two category of the land, we would have about three hundred thousand of the land, yeah, planted to cashew with the total production of around close to half a million tons. So achieving the one million tons of cashew in five years' time is most likely, yeah, is most likely. But we need to work all together to reach this milestone, yeah? Now, next slide please. We, how can we sustain the production? Not in term of just increase the yield, but sustain productions, maintain the quality and safety of the cashew for the consumers and for the markets. So we are in transitioning of our traditional low resilient farming practices to a more adaptive or resilient farming practice we call agro-ecological farming practice. This practice can help reduce carbon emission, increase the carbon stock in the soils, and also it can help reduce the chemical fertilizer used by at least thirty percent, promising, yeah. So we have been working this in Phnom Hare province under a pilot project funded by EU AFD. We focus on the cashew productions, agro-ecologically produce cashews, okay? So look at, you know, the picture, the cover crop that we use in the crop within the cashew plantations. We call it sunham here. So sunham is the, you know, a kind of legumes crops that with its noodle that can fix nitrogen from the atmosphere, enrich the soil with nitrogen. So that's why you can reduce less fertilizer nitrogen to your cashew crops. This is a good, the good things about the, you know, the agro-ecological practice in the cashew production. So we promoting this into our cashew plantations. Next slide please. Oh, sorry, back, back, yeah. So this is not a good practices, but it's acceptable practice by, you know, our farmers. So we cashew the fruits drop by themselves and then we remove the apple, the what we call the cashew, the cashew apple. We clean the dirt and the sticky parts and then we try to moisture contain around nine to ten percent. Okay, this is our practice, yeah. Next, next slide please, thank you. You can see in this slide how the price of cashew nuts vary across the value chain because the morals of cashew nuts value change. So at the farm, price of cashew is only about one point five dollars per kilogram, but it increase to the first processing, you know, by about, I would say here around seventy percent, okay? Seventy percent or seven times. And then from the first processing to the second processing, the price increase ten to twenty times. And depending on where you are in the world, the price can increase, you know, up to fifty dollars per kilogram, yeah? So it's how, you know, how, how, how the price vary across the value chain. This is our studies in 2023. Another, next slide please. You know, I mentioned in the earlier slides that we have the over one hundred local varieties. We have selected the improved traditional variety. The famous one is M twenty-three. You can see display in the booth outside, okay? So mostly M twenty-three. So this is, you know, I mean, the strengths of our cashew industry that can meet the Royal Government of Cambodia policies to develop the cashew industry in the country. So M twenty-three, I don't need to mention, Excellency Varo San already elaborated on this, but the good thing is, you know, in addition to the adaptive capacity of the variety to climate change, it's flower two to three times, flower two to three times. So this allow the cashew to be more adaptive to climate change. For example, causing the erratic rainfall, causing the changes in, you know, response to the increased temperature. But overall, in Cambodia, our maximum temperature generally reach a maximum of thirty-six degrees Celsius, well below the critical temperature level that affect the cashew flowering and fruit setting. Over thirty-nine degrees Celsius, it affect the flowering and fruit settings. Next slide. This is just the picture of the variety that we released. Next slide please. Next slide please, thank you. That is the cashew export, I think I don't need to mention this, but I just want to attract attention that the, you know, if you look at the export of the cashew nut shells. So this is the real, also the real challenges of our industry. We, that mean we export biomass together with nutrients as well, especially nitrogen, phosphorus, and potassium. We export out of the farm and out of the country. So this we have to think about that as well, okay? Not just the value that you lose, but it is the biomass and the nutrients they export. Yeah, next slide. The challenge, you heard already the challenge, but I would like to highlight some of the specific challenges. This is related to the third question of the investment opportunity because I think that the challenges create the opportunity for the investment, okay? Now, look at the high productions of course in the country. Our Deputy Prime Minister already mentioned that the Royal Government of Cambodia provide the kind of like tax incentive for the local processing, local producer of the, you know, agricultural imports or processing. So this incentive, for example, investor can come to invest in production of fertilizers, organic fertilizers in the country. And then you, you would contribute to the reduce the price, the cost of the fertilizer. And I would like to mention that Cambodia rely mostly on the import of fertilizers and pesticides from overseas countries. So local investment, this would be contribute a lot to help Cambodia reduce import of chemicals, agrochemicals to the country. The second challenge is the unreliable yield and the production. This you cannot do much, but you can do something with the more adaptive variety. So strengthening the capacity to breed, you know, to develop new cashew variety that are more tolerant to local climatic conditions. That's, that I think is what we can, we can do in this. And of course, the fluctuating price, I think it is not unusual because when the peak hours time, the price always drop. So it is usual. The lack of storage and processing infrastructure, you heard about that, this is opportunity for the investment. This is the challenge that Cambodia export. Ninety percent of cashew, raw cashew overseas, only about ten percent produce or process in the country. This is because of this challenge, the lack of storage facility, lack of processing infrastructure, investment opportunity, okay? So I think maybe given that challenge that I just mentioned, what the Ministry of Agriculture, Forestry and Fishery, yeah, next slide please, yeah. What we have done, okay? We established the cashew cooperatives under the framework of modern agricultural cooperatives. The second thing is to facilitate the loan for modern agricultural cooperatives so that they created, they function, yeah, and they manage it in a way that they have access to market, they have access to better quality of inputs and also help to stabilize the, yeah, help to stabilize the price, okay, by creating the cooperatives. The third point is to reduce the cost of production. At the same time, we increase the input use efficiency. So in this, we improve the input supply system agro like fertilizer, pesticide and seeds in order to get the farmer have access to good quality inputs. Then they have the safety produce and then make profits, yeah. So this is number three. And number four, of course, we support the cashew processing enterprise and handicraft, you know, by attract the investment in loans and market linkage, skill development and support the regulations to the farmers and cashew cooperatives. I think I'm going to the last slide and would like to thank you very much for your, next slide, yeah. Thank you very much for your attentions and also thanks the organizer of these wonderful events for having Cambodia host the tenth World Cashew Conference. Thank you very much.
So the interesting takeaway.
So an interesting takeaway that I found. One thing was there is a million hectare of land in Cambodia that is very suitable, yeah? That was interesting. And out of a million hectare land, only half a million hectare has been planted. And there is five million hectare of land which is suitable and which can also grow cashew. Interesting. And another interesting fact, when I heard that all this future plantations that we are planning in Cambodia, we are not planning to cut any forest. And I'm sure my colleagues would be like happy to hear that. So very happy to hear that, sir. And so then I would like to have only two specific questions on which we can talk. First question would be on the, the production front. When we are saying that Cambodia has half a million ton hectare under acreage for cash unit. So where do you see five years down the line, ten years down the line, this five hundred thousand will go up how much acreage wise? Can we get a mic, please? So yeah, this question would be like for the panel, like you can add in your input. If there is any new variety called M forty-six, that can do double of M twenty-three in the planning?
Thank you very much. Airbowl lands, we have around seven point five millions hectares, airbowl land, okay? So if we increase, you know, like five, five percents, okay? Five percents. But I said in term of the suitability and highly suitable, okay? Yes, around six million hectares of that. So if five percent or may, I, I would say a great or increase of the land, maybe, you know, like a, a maximum of five percent in five years, that would give a total production area of at least eight hundred thousand hectares.
Five percent every year?
No, not every year. I mean, a total of five percent in five years.
Okay, so in five, five years, this six hundred will become?
Yeah, that would lead to the increase at least eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand?
Yeah, hectares, yeah.
Eight hundred thousand hectare?
Yes. So if you multiply by the average yield of one point five, you see how, what is the productions, okay? And the M twenty-three, Excellency Waro San mentioned, potential year or up to three point five tons or two point five tons. It's, it's credible, you know, yeah.
Correct, correct.
So we are positive.
Even if we take a conservative number of eight hundred thousand hectare into, let's say, two metric ten, that is more than one and a half million ton. That's fantastic, yeah. Thank you. So then next would be like with this one and a half million ton of raw cash unit, like what specific incentives that government is planning for processing industry to set up in Cambodia? Specific like three or four main points?
I, I thank you very much. I think it on what gentleman from the Ministry of Agriculture have indicated the expectation that the next five years will eat on another eight hundred thousand hectare of cashew plantation. I, I think it would be more than that if the investor could see the potential from what Cambodia is prepared to help them. In our investment law that we adopt in twenty twenty-one during the COVID nineteen, which is this law not widely disseminated among the investors of the cash unit. If they got the right information about this law, they might flock in to invest in these sectors. Because before, when you invest whether hundred hectare of land for plantation, you not get any incentive. But under the new law, we give them a opportunity to invest up to hundred hectare of land of one million US dollar of the investment in the cashew, including the processing itself, they will get a investment incentive in the group one. Group one, we allow them to choose two option, whether they are select for a tax exemption. You don't need to pay corporate income tax nine years, nine years. And when finish the nine-year tax holiday, you have another six year to pay a progressive rate, not the full tax rate. It's mean two year, the first two year, you pay twenty-five percent of corporate income tax. The next two year, you got to pay fifty percent of corporate income tax. And the last two year, you got, you pay seventy-five percent. So all in all, they don't need to pay tax sixteen, fifteen years already. So it enough for the investors who invested in this cashew sector to enjoy this benefit. In addition to this, we allow the company to import in the machinery, equipment, production input for the purpose of investing in cashew plantation and processing with import duty exemption. You don't need to pay import duty. And if, if, if you don't select for the tax holiday or, or income tax exemption, you are allowed to choose for a special depreciation. If you use heavy machine or capital intensive investment in these sectors, we allow you to depreciate the first year up to fifty percent, or forty percent and continue with the accelerated depreciation. That allow a, a company to have enough working capital for their business operation. And we allow also to have a tax deduction for a expense that you spend for a skill development, research development for your own product just for the enhancement of the productivity in your business. We allow you to, to deduct from the tax two hundred percent of those expense. This is something we want to highlight it. And I love the idea of the discussion early with regard to the sustainability. In our investment law, we encourage private sectors to apply the sustainability, the sustainable concept in their business. And even if they voluntarily spend for the activity that boosts a responsible business conduct concept in their business, all those expense will allow you to deduct one hundred fifty percent.
That is fantastic.
If you spend for the healthcare for your employee, worker, farmer, all those expense will be allowed to deduct from the tax one hundred fifty percent. If you spend for a transportation for your worker, you spend for a canteen, for your canteen service for your worker and you spend for a upgrading the machinery just to enhance your productivity, we allow you to deduct from those expense one hundred fifty percent as well. That's something we really want to highlight what Cambodia put forward to help the investment, investors in these sectors.
Understood, thank you so much, sir. So just a last concluding question. I hope you guys are patient for the last one. And this question is coming like, you know, from colleagues of mine who have been insisting that they would like to know. So they would like to know that when Cambodia is targeting to be a global leading processor of raw cash unit. So is government also planning any policies in which, like, you know, there would be an incentive on the export of cashew kernels or there would be any taxation on the export of raw cash unit? Like there are policies in other countries like that. So are we planning similar such things or it's still in the discussion?
I, I think based on the current policy that we put to promote the production of cashew sectors in Cambodia, three thing we are working toward helping private sector grow in Cambodia in these sectors. The first part, we incentivize them for reproduction, plantation. The second, we incentivize them to have a processing. And the third, we establish a platform to facilitate them to export. Whether, whether it is a raw, exporting the raw cashew or the processing cashew, there is a platform. At the Council for Development of Cambodia, we established Agri-Food Investment Days. We thank the Australian government who gave a technical assistance during the COVID nineteen for us to work toward establishing this Agri-Food Investment Days, which we have a representative from the Ministry of Commerce, Ministry of Industry, Ministry of Agriculture, Ministry of Economic and Finance, who work together to facilitate. One, they want to invest in agri-food sectors, including the cashew because we identify nine crop
Key products, yeah.
to be facilitated for the investment in these sectors. And cashews one of the crop that we are looking to. So that platform will help you, will help investors to go from plantation, processing until the export. That is something we are working to help them. And another platform that we want to help the private sectors to link their production and, and, and their supply with the other processing outside Cambodia or even the foreign investor who really want to procure all those raw material production input from local so that they can buy from the local supplier. That we establish supplier database. That suppliers database allow supplier to put their information in there, in that. And we require those supplier to meet the sustainability dimension, six of them. But if they meet one among the six, they are able to go with that because we want to keep credibility of the supplier, those who really commit to the sustainable development. When they have their information in this database, they are able to get the each, more efficient facilitation from our office. So that this is a incentive that we put for them in addition to the fiscal incentive that I mentioned nine-year tax holiday and everything. This is non-fiscal incentive that we are putting to help a cashew sector grow.
Few minutes, we shall be opening these partitions between the two halls so that we can have a bigger party area. A big thank you to our next speaker, His Excellency Waro San. So ladies and gentlemen, as the cocktails would start, we would also start with our sponsor felicitations. And we have a beautiful exquisite Cambodian performance coming up. A big thank you to His Excellency Chan So Pha for his time on the stage with us. And a big thank you to the people that are still clapping. You are the ones that keep the convention alive till the last moment. Thank you so much. And finally, thank you, Mr. Yin Chan Sothi for your time on the stage, sir, and your presentation as well. I would also request Mr. Jimmy to present a memento to Mr. Deepen Joshi, our moderator for this session. Gentlemen, may I request you to step forward for a group picture, all of you together, please? Let me have you, all of you leave the venue as we have the felicitations coming up. We also have a gorgeous exquisite Cambodian mask dance performance coming up that you won't want to miss. Having said this, it's time to just let loose and enjoy the evening and be here with us as we enjoy the vibe here in Siem Reap.